We can go ahead and start the meeting. Good evening, and this is the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee for the City of Issaquah, September 13th, 2022. Russell Joe Chair. The attendance will show that Barb D. Michelle is here, Councilmember for the City of Issaquah, and Deputy Counsel President. What's your name again? Got it. Deputy Counsel President Zach Hall, President. First thing on the agenda is public comment. Before we start that, I will read a brief preamble here that we're still under some COVID-19 restrictions. For our meeting tonight, there'll be two public comment opportunities. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or members of the public may make comments after the presentation of each individual agenda item. The Chair will share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda after the public comment's over, but if there are members of the public that wish to address the council at this time, in person or virtually, we'll go ahead and give them that opportunity. We'll start with those that might have signed up in advance to make comments. They'll be called on first. Do we have anyone that signed up? Deputy Clerk.
Chair Joe, Cynthia Crass, the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Board, would like to speak at public comment.
That's great. Please approach the lecture, and you have five minutes, but no one's calculating the time, tracking the time.
I'll be very brief. My name is Cynthia Crass. I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Board, and I came here this evening just to be a resource if there's any questions you guys have about what the TAB had to say. I also just want to set expectations that I will do my best to recollect how we all felt and provide any feedback, but I'm not representing the full TAB at this time. I'm representing my best recollection of what we all decided with, of course, my own interpretations mixed in there. So happy to be here and happy to be establishing a better connection between the TAB and this committee to the extent that's reasonable and appropriate, and so you might be seeing me a little more at this or others as well. But I didn't have anything prepared, nothing. I'm going to go ahead and let staff share what they have to say about the topic, so I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Crass. We appreciate your dedication and the time that you put forward as a volunteer for the Transportation Advisory Committee there. Other members of the public that wish to speak, do we have anyone in the chamber or online?
Chair Joe, we have nobody else in council chambers and nobody online.
Okay. That's fantastic. If there is anyone online watching this now or in the future, just as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. I will go ahead and summarize one of the -- well, actually, I'll wait on that. I'll wait for our deputy administrator to talk about a recent email as we go forward. All right. So we'll now move on to the main agenda, and the first --
I'm sorry, Councilmember Joe. Can I interrupt? And we skipped over approval of the minutes.
Yes, I was going to go to number three, approval of the minutes, right now. Thank you. Those are the August 9th minutes that hopefully everyone has had an opportunity to review. Any changes, modifications? Okay. I'll set to motion then.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented in tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We'll move on then to Agenda Item Number Four, ID 116, Transit Shuttle Options for Squawk and Talis Neighborhoods. We have John Larson Friend, Transportation Program Coordinator, here to give us a presentation. As many that have lived in the community for years know that the council has been wrestling with this idea of potentially extending our transportation to some of our neighborhoods. This is a discussion of the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods tonight, and we look forward to the presentation, and then the committee will decide what action or recommendations to make back to the council or to the administration for budget discussions this fall. Without further ado, John Larson Friend, please go forward.
Thank you, Councilman Joe. Good evening. As you said, I am John Larson Friend. I'm the Transportation Program Coordinator, and tonight we're talking about the transit shuttle options for the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods. So first, the purpose tonight is to present the three most viable options for a shuttle service for the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods to connect to the Transit Center and other major locations in Issaquah. We're looking tonight for direction on how the city -- how should the city better connect Squawk and Talis neighborhoods to transit in other parts of Issaquah while reducing single occupancy vehicle trips? We are presenting three specific options and a fourth do-nothing option, the first being an on-demand pilot partnership with Metro, the second being a city-run shuttle, and that would be an investment in a third-party system, and third, an alternative to a shuttle, which would be an Uber or Lyft partnership, and of course, the fourth, the do-nothing and proactive efforts to connect Squawk and Talis to the rest of Issaquah. So first, I just wanted to orient anyone who might be watching. I know councilmembers are well aware of the community and its shape, but first, we have the Talis neighborhood, kind of in the pink fuchsia color there. It is a newer neighborhood. It's quite hilly, lots of grade there, and it is separated from the Transit Center and the other downtown and central business district areas by SR 900, and does not have very good pedestrian or bicycle -- excuse me, bicycle infrastructure that people might be using. And of course, we also have Squawk Mountain, which is a mountain, and does not have great infrastructure as far as sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera, and the topography of the neighborhood prevents most people from even attempting to walk to the downtown or central business districts. I also put together this map. This is a map of the distance from transit stops. As you can see from the colors there, we have the bus stops in pink and the active transit routes, the current transit routes, in purple there. And as you can see, as we get into the Talis and Squawk neighborhoods, as we get further and further away from those bus lines, we're getting a quarter mile, half mile, even to two miles away from any bus stop, really preventing anyone from really successfully getting to those bus stops in any serious way. We know from transportation planning that a quarter mile is the kind of the golden distance for people who might be walking around in an area, and anything beyond that, people are more likely to use a single occupancy vehicle. And this map isn't even including the fact that the topography really prevents -- would prevent most people from even attempting it. So I want to first turn to some history, just to kind of get everyone familiar with where we've been so that we can successfully move forward. So previously, we're going to start kind of wide, and I'll zoom in over the next three slides. So it starts in 1995. The city formed a temporary transit advisory committee, which led to the development of the 2003 Transit Need Study. In 2003, in addition to that Transit Need Study, Metro started a freebie transit service, which was the first iteration of Route 200, which was free for community members to use. Between 2003 and 2013, the city did try to initiate a Metro-run shuttle service with no success. 2013, a new effort involving the Highlands neighborhood emerged to consider a local shuttle for them. In 2015, the Highlands' efforts resulted in Route 200 being extended to the Highlands and Swedish Hospital. And it also led to the creation of Route 628, which runs to North Bend and Seculonie. In 2020, Highlands again explored a privately-run shuttle option, but due to high operating costs and the effects of the pandemic, it was ultimately voted down by the Highlands Council. Budgetary problems due to the pandemic also led Metro to suspend Route 200, and the route was ultimately canceled altogether in 2021.
Yes, we have a question from Councilmember D. Michelle.
Absolutely.
John, you know, I know that I was actually involved in the early studies of the shuttle, but I don't remember. When we first started that shuttle way back in 2003, was it completely subsidized by the city, or was it a partnership with Metro? I know it became a partnership later on, but do we have a historic memory of how that got started?
Councilmember D. Michelle, this is Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator. You're asking about the Route 200, is that correct?
What became the Route 200, yes.
Yeah. It's my understanding that the city partnered on fare box only, and we provided the estimated fare that would have been collected by Metro, and so that's the partnership. I do not believe that the city adopted 100% of the costs or offered 100% of the cost of operation. I think we just contributed towards the service.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just, you know, in the dim past. And then, as the city, we took -- Metro took more control of the program, and we continued to subsidize it for a while at least, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember. Moving on to zooming in a little bit further, the formal efforts to initiate a shuttle service for specifically the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods started in 2017. 2017, the city applied for Metro's Community Connections Program, which has been renamed since to Community Ride. 2018, the city was selected to explore a new project by Metro to connect the Squawk and Talis neighborhood to the greater Issaquah area. In 2019, a group was formed to explore more options. The pilot was getting ready, but was asked to be reevaluated by Metro leadership in late 2019. In 2020, major changes to Metro's project management and COVID-19 forced the project to be put on hold. And in 2021, Metro announced that multiple Community Ride projects, including Issaquah's, were no longer prioritized and were later canceled altogether. So that brings us to our current efforts. So in June 2021, as you might remember, following the cancellation of the Community Ride projects, the administration returned to City Council for guidance on next steps. The staff had been chatting with Metro about collaborating on an Issaquah shuttle, and council advised them to move forward with a Metro partnership. However, between June 2021 and March 2022, when I was hired, Metro suspended all pilot projects until further notice. I will mention that recent chats with Metro that I have had have led to a new willingness to talk about the project again in the near future. And then we went to TAB in August and September with our findings, which of course brings us to this evening tonight. And then I will also add that in 2024-plus, because the project keeps getting moved down the line, changes to bus routes in Issaquah will occur as a part of the East Link expansion. And I want to just note that this is, as far as I know, is the adopted bus route map that Metro will be moving forward with whenever East Link does open. So Metro is consolidating their bus lines to create more efficiency, bringing the number of lines down to two -- or, sorry, to five routes, and that's down from eight before Route 200 was canceled. It's actually down from seven. So in transit planning, there's always a tension between coverage and frequency. Metro seems to be moving forward with a frequency model for this area. 554 will move to Gilman from Newport Way, so of course, that kind of moves those routes even further away from Squawk and Talis, which brings us to our options that we are offering tonight. So again, the first one is to pursue a partnership with a Metro-run on-demand pilot program. Second, create and implement a city-funded third-party run system. And third, partner with Uber and/or Lyft on a subsidized rideshare service. And then the fourth, of course, we can choose to do nothing. So before I move in and really dive into this first option, I just kind of want to go over the evaluation criteria, just so it's clear. So first, at the top there, we have Cost of User Per Ride, which is approximately how much riders will have to pay per ride. Cost to the city per year is the projected city investment into the program option per year. City support is the level of needed program participation by the city. Convenience is the ease in which the service is accessed by riders. Reliability is the likelihood that the service will arrive when and where riders need it. Scalability is the service area increase process complexity and feasibility. Equity concerns are any potential barriers to ridership, including income, smartphone access, place of residence, mobility limitations, anything like that. Timeline is the year of the potential start of service, which is usually a guess, but our best educated guess. And finally, we have risk, which we added since TAB. We did not have the risk category, but we felt it was important to bring it to tonight, and that's the likelihood that the city's investment will not work in the long or short term due to outside factors. So moving into the actual option one, so the first option would be the on-demand pilot, that partnership with Metro, and we would want to work with Metro to create and implement a microtransit service for the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods, likely on-demand, similar to the other Community Rides programs, like, for example, the one in Samamish. So right now, Metro is in a request-for-proposal process, and they're working to consolidate all their on-demand services under one provider. Most of them are kind of all over the place, different types of providers, and they're trying to kind of bring them under one umbrella. I also followed up with Metro today concerning a question about whether Metro is working with any other jurisdictions on future on-demand projects, and their answer was, and this is a quote, "At this time, we currently do not have funding or staff resources for additional expansions of our on-demand services. Metro is not working with any other cities on new pilots, on-demand services, except for the three previously committed grant-funded pilots that are a part of the Link Light Rail bus restructures. Metro will consult with Issaquah and others who are considering launching their own services, and will consider a partnership and grant opportunities, though at this time, staff resources and funding are very limited." So looking through, and I'll just kind of walk us through the different categories and why we came to those conclusions very briefly. So first of all, the cost of user per ride, we classified as low. It would be a part of the ORCA system. Any transfers between a shuttle or on-demand service to a bus, for example, would -- it would just carry over. There wouldn't be any extra cost to riders. The cost to city per year, we have classified as high, $100,000 to $200,000. So right now, Metro is expressing a desire basically for, if we were to be serious about some sort of partnership with them, they're looking at, okay, how much are you willing to put on the table? And due to past discussions with council, $200,000 seemed to be a golden number that had came up multiple times during the research and the history and other presentations, and so that's why we put $100,000 to $200,000. City support, so it would be moderate. It would be, we would require a half to a full-time person to manage the relationship, the marketing, the check-ins, just to make sure everything is running smoothly, though Metro would handle the majority of the work, of course. As far as convenience and reliability, we find that those would be high, and those are based on their current programs, especially, you know, some Samamish and I'm forgetting the other ones that I'm thinking of, but the existing ones, they're very convenient, they're very reliable, so we have every confidence that they would continue to be so in this community as well. Scalability would be moderate, and that's because, you know, any changes that we might want to make from the city side, like, hey, we want to expand it here to this or whatever, you know, there would have to be a fairly robust conversation and process to go through with Metro, so that's why that's moderate. Equity concerns, much like convenience and reliability, low, because they've done such a good job in these other communities of making sure that those who need to access it can, and giving alternatives to, you know, hailing it or, you know, phone numbers or just ways to give more people more access. As far as the timeline goes, Metro's request for proposal, they're aiming for it to be completed by early 2023, and that's kind of them being aspirational about it. So we believe that once any partnership that they choose to go forward with to implement all of their programs, you know, they would have to get going and set, and of course, then we would have to come to them and go through the same process of evaluation and testing and all of that, so we believe the earliest that we could get this going is 2024, if not further out. And we evaluated this risk as moderate. It's, there is a decent chance that Metro will ultimately say, no, this is not what we want to do, let's just take it off the table, and so we have to kind of live with that risk as we're having these conversations.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Really appreciate the presentation tonight, the thoroughness of it as we're evaluating it. Just for those of us that think, you know, visually, what would this service look like? Would someone have an app and they would contact Metro that I need a ride at a particular time? And where does the -- are there limitations as to the endpoints for the rides, et cetera? If you could just give us a little picture of what it might look like?
Yeah, using the Samamish program that they have, anyone who wants to use it, and this is not including any phone numbers if people don't have access to a smartphone, just kind of the general project is, or pilot, I should say, is there's an app, you would put in your location, it would probably be using location services, and, you know, I think, I believe you can schedule ahead of time, and then it'll also show, you know, how far away it might be to get to you if you were to book it, and then it would stay within the coverage area. It's not like an Uber or Lyft where you could start somewhere and just go outside the system. They have very specific boundaries that you can travel within, which is why they expanded it to the Squawk Highlands Station a few years ago, because they were finding that people really wanted to get there, and it was the best way to access the larger bus system, but they weren't able to get there because there was a line, basically. So yeah, that -- does that answer your question?
Yeah, so a person that was asking for a ride could basically go to anywhere in the service area, and primarily, it's going to be in Issaquah proper as I --
Yes.
Okay. And so that would then include the two parking rides, in essence, so that we are funneling people to the system, so to speak, that they could, you know, from there, link up and get to Bellevue or Seattle, the employment centers. Is that kind of the overall intention?
Yes, but I would say that if we're planning on just serving the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods, it would probably just be the Squaw Valley Transit Center and not extend all the way up to the Highlands.
Great, appreciate that. Did you have a question, Deputy Administrator?
No, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Thank you. I've got two quick questions about option one here, one for you, John, and one for our deputy city administrator. So first, with regard to city support for this option, my understanding is it would pretty much be in the pre-phase, right? So standing it up, implementation, but then would we have any kind of staff responsibility or burden onwards after the pilot program has been stood up?
To some degree, yes, just because of community engagement and whatnot. That would probably be a conversation that we would need to have with Metro on specifically what the city staff role would be. It would be more limited than it would be on the front end.
Okay. So if it started off as one FTE, it might morph to half or something like that.
Sure.
Okay. And then for the timeline, since the timeline for this is potentially starting in 2024, and I don't want to get ahead of budget presentation next week, but has this been thought of with regard to the biennial budget, and is this something that there's a place setting, or will it need to be a budget amendment?
We would need, this is Andrea, we would need a budget amendment. We did not, given the great variation in costs among the options, we felt uncomfortable proposing a placeholder number for this budget.
No, we're not quite there yet. We're interspersing questions for clarification, I guess, at this point. Okay. Go ahead.
Great. I will move on to option two. So option two is invest in a third-party shuttle system. So this specific option, we would basically go through in a request-for-proposal process, put out a call for third-party shuttle system runners, companies that do this professionally, and, you know, go through the RFP process and choose the best one. And so then, the city would be highly involved in this sort of system, but of course, the day-to-day operations would be left to that third-party provider. So I think I'll just dive into the criteria, because I think I can describe it a little bit better as I go. So first of all, the cost of the user per ride, we said is moderate. It would be an additional cost to the rider. We said $1 to $2, because that's generally what my discussions with several, a couple of third-party providers, that's kind of the threshold that they operate under. And of course, that is an additional cost on top of, say, if they're trying to get to the transit station, they would have to pay that $1 to $2, and then they would have to pay the ORCA fare, basically. So it would be a compounded cost, doubling essentially the amount of money that somebody might pay. Moving to the cost of the city per year, we said this is high. We put a range of $400,000 to $800,000, and that is because it's kind of variable, depending on what sort of services that you want to run. So generally, at this point, and I think this may not include inflation, this is, these are the numbers that I was able to ascertain from those who run current services, but I think they were operating from, this is what we paid last year total, and we don't, we're not really sure what the inflation's going to do, but that number is around $85 to $115 an hour to run, per vehicle. And so the good news is, is we have a local example. So the Highlands, when they explored a partnership with Lyft Tango in 2020, 2021, they did come with them with an actual proposal with hard numbers. Granted, these numbers are 2020 numbers, but they were looking at a two-shuttle system, and they were pitched $471,000 per year. This was for two 14-passenger vehicles, $19,624 a month per vehicle to run. It would have run on a flex route, which basically is a fixed route with some door-to-door, you know, within a quarter mile, half a mile, depending on how the system is set up. Someone might be able to call it to their doorstep, but generally runs on that fixed route. Now, the $471,000 number comes from limited hourly, limited hours in operation. So Monday through Thursday, it was only peak hours. It was only, I think, like 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. and something like 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. or something like that. It was only those peak hours during the day. Friday and Saturday, it ran for 12 hours during the daytime hours, and Sunday would have run nine hours during the daytime hours. And because of the peak hour only, these drivers would have been only part-time drivers, which, right now, there's a driver shortage kind of nationally anyway, and it's even harder to find part-time drivers. So looking at that lower, lower $471,000 number, there are a lot of additional kind of background things that kind of come along with that lower cost. So city support, very similar to the Metro, although at a higher level, you know, that day-to-day, week-to-week contact with the provider to make sure that the service is running well, running appropriately, any, you know, public comments that might come up that might need addressing, so that's why we put moderate. Convenience and reliability, both moderate, because there is a fear, well, let me start with convenience. So convenience is maybe an issue, because due to state law, our city-run service wouldn't be able to overlap whatsoever with Metro service, and that's just because of -- And that's just because of, of the, of the way things work and state law and whatnot. And so we would have to ensure that, that, that service would, would run basically on any street that the buses aren't and, and wouldn't be able to drop off, you know, right at the transit station, it would have to be a block away, stuff like that, little logistical things that would prevent specific convenience from occurring. Reliability, TAB specifically had concerns over staffing, and that kind of comes with that bus drivers shortage. And if it's, since it's a local, very hyper-localized service, then you would, that like, that definitely would shrink the pool of potential drivers, for sure. And we also would be operating with limited vehicles. I believe that Samamish started with one vehicle, up to two, they're thinking about a third, you know, they have that ability to, to change as things change, but because of the budgetary restraints that the city might have, we might have to cap it at two and, you know, and there's, there's a high likelihood that maybe that's not enough for the specific service area that we're looking at. So that's why we had those two at moderate. Scalability, we would be able to adjust the service areas if we needed to, but we, we're not really sure of what those limitations actually are until we would get into conversations with, with a third-party system operator. Looking at equity concerns, basically all of the above are constraining equity. There's, you know, and plus the massive amount of money spent each year would take away from other community programs as well. The timeline we're looking at is 2024, for much the same reasons as Metro. We would have to go through the RFP request for proposal process, we would have to work with the operator to figure out the best type of service, where to go, you know, the virtual bus stops or the physical bus stops that we might create with them or anything like that, it would be a process that we, we'd need to go through. And 2024 is probably the soonest that we, we'd get that going. And staff and TAB definitely agree that the risk of this failing is very high because of, basically of all the above, everything that I've described, it's a big risk and for that amount of money, it mean, it probably wouldn't be worth the experiment, because that's, that's kind of what a Metro partnership would be. It would be a pilot to figure out how this, if this could work. And to spend that amount of money as a city on an experiment is very, very risky. I'll pause for any questions or clarifications.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So, and then, thank you for the presentation again, it's very thorough. We would end up having to sign a contract with this, and that would be, what would be a standard industry contract, would that be a five years? I mean, we would be obligated, whether or not it survived, to pay off that contract, right?
That is, that's very likely. I'm getting a nod to my right. I, I believe that there are abilities to flex that, you know, to, to a year to start and see how it goes. I think that's what Lyft Tango was with Highlands, but once that goes into place, yeah, it would probably be a much longer contract time over time. Okay. I will move on to our third option. So this one, I have some information upfront and I'll, I'll address Uber and Lyft kind of independently, since we, we were able to have conversations with both independently. So the third option is an alternative to a shuttle. It would be an Uber-Lift partnership. It would be using local drivers, private drivers, and, and subsidizing that, that relationship with that, with those companies. So first of all, thinking about Uber, so the data that we got from Uber is there are currently an average of 6,000 Uber rides per month in Issaquah, which is higher than I expected. And internally, usually those rides are about one to three miles, so just kind of those quick trips, ones that, that is addressed in, in this kind of type of shuttle system. They offered several different program options. One is a subsidized voucher program. So what we, what they would do is, well, what we would do as a city is we would subsidize each ride. The average cost per ride for Uber in, within Issaquah is about $12. And so we would subsidize it down to $2 for them. We would pay the $10, they would pay the $2. They can also restrict the length of the subsidized rides. So if someone tried to do a subsidized ride and happened to be going six miles, it's highly unlikely that they're staying within Issaquah, so they could, you know, they could restrict the length of those particular rides. They can also create geofenced zones to trigger those subsidies, which, scooters, it's the same idea as the scooters, and they could, you know, keep those subsidies within a certain geofenced area. The city would only be responsible for subsidies, subsidies and marketing. They very specifically wouldn't market, that would be on us as a city, city staff to do. They did offer an example in Tolleson, Arizona. It's a former shuttle system and they got tired of their shuttle and they reached out to Uber and formed a relationship with them. They were able to create virtual, virtual bus stops, they would put up little QR codes in different places, people would use their phone and it would auto-populate the app with the subsidy information and, and stuff like that. I did reach out to them, but I have not heard back yet, so hopefully I'll hear, hear back by the time I might go to call counsel. So if we pursued this option, they really stressed that they're.
John, can I interject and say something?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. This is Andrea again. So one of the things I just wanted to highlight is that John talked about some of these different options of what the service could look like. There's a lot of policy decisions within that. In order for us to estimate costs and think of what this could look like, we, we used some assumptions just to be able to compare these options with one another. So what he was talking about, the level of subsidy that he was suggesting, what those services could look like, all of those would require future policy discussions, future detailed discussions with council. It's really just for this scenario, for this purpose and exercise of trying to figure out what could this look like, what could the costs be? John looked at, like he said, other cities, talked to Uber and Lyft and figured out what's kind of a typical arrangement in terms of level of subsidy, et cetera. But all of those discussions, should we move forward, this option would really need to occur. Decisions have not been made yet. And he also mentioned geofencing, the idea of, you know, us, the city being able to control where these trips would occur within the city. One of, as I understand it, one of the goals of this shuttle program has been to reduce SOV, or single occupant vehicle trips in the city. And so you could have a question of how does an Uber or Lyft really reduce single occupant vehicle trips within the city? And one thing that we would look at, again, future policy discussion you need to have is, do we want to restrict any city-sponsored service like this to between Squawk and Talis and the area around the transit center? So it's not like they can necessarily take an Uber or Lyft, the city would subsidize and go on a shopping spree somewhere within Issaquah, certainly not outside of Issaquah. But that would, again, need to be another conversation we would have about exactly what are the goals of this program? If we want it to be really focused on reducing single occupant vehicle trips, then it would be just used as a connection point to connect people to the transit center and make it easier for them to access transit.
Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Thank you, a very, very well point, or well-made point. Can we just make sure then, as this continues to evolve, that we capture all of the policy questions that we need to answer in some sort of document?
Yes, and thank you. You know, we, what we're asking for in terms of direction from council this evening is which of these options should we continue to try to flesh out more and have more discussion? So we didn't want to fully develop all of the policy questions for each of these options, that'd be a little overwhelming tonight, really just wanting to know where would you like us to focus among these three, or, you know, pick two out of the three or whatever council's direction may be.
Excellent. Thank you for clarifying those points, I appreciate it. So jumping back to Uber briefly, so if, basically if we pursued this option with them, there'd be a lot of testing, which we talked about. They said that there is about a three-to-four week startup time post-contract signing. They said when close, the agreement is getting close to being signed, Uber would begin to set things up. They would then do some testing within the community, they'd do a soft launch of, of the subsidized or the program. Then there would be a stretch of marketing and then there'd be a formal launch. So that is Uber. And then jumping over to Lyft, which is, they gave us a lot more data, but less program ideas, so it's kind of the opposite. So the first of all, the first thing is the average ride in Issaquah for Lyft is $13.50, so $1.50 higher on average for Lyft. The average estimated time of arrival, once a Lyft is ordered, is 10 to 20 minutes, which for us really does indicate that these are drivers coming from outside the community getting here to then drive people around. Currently, there is an average of 2,400 Lyft rides per month, which is, you know, less than half of Uber. And, but specifically, they offered an average of 260 monthly rides began or ended in Squawk and Talis. The program options that they offered, they have a Lyft Pass program. Organizations essentially cover all or a portion of, of the cost of a ride. Currently, they said that they could support a partnership like that with a cap of 600 subsidized rides per month. So they are putting a cap. Uber didn't mention a cap, but they did. The example that they gave us is Summit, New Jersey. So they, they have a, some kind of a centralized train station that goes into New York City. They worked with Uber, or sorry, they worked with Lyft to create a, a kind of a to-and-from station system. It limits people to two rides per day, $0 for those who pay for a train station monthly parking pass, and $2 per trip without the parking pass. So basically, how, how it works is you have the train station as the central location, going to there or from there specifically, the city then subsidizes the ride to the train station or from. So then moving into the analysis piece, so the cost of user, the cost to user per ride, we said is moderate for the same reasons as the third-party system. Uber mentioned that it's good to have a monetary barrier for those who might take advantage of the system, for someone to just hop in and just ride around. But we shouldn't look at more than $2 per ride, otherwise the access to rider, basically ridership drops off after $2. Looking at the cost to the city per year, so we put this as high, the $50,000 to $100,000, and we put it as high because even though it is the lowest cost, it's the least reliable option. So Lyft, as I mentioned, put a cap of 600 subsidized rides per month, Uber did not specify. And TAB recommended that this be classified as high due to, to the potential ballooning of, of costs to the city. City support, much like the other three options, is moderate for much the same reasons. We'd have to manage the relationship, figuring, figure out if, if it's working for the community, make any tweaks, have meetings, you know, make sure that it's really working in a, in the best way possible. Convenience, we put as moderate. Transit riders and those who use Rideshare don't always overlap. I personally use, can use both, but that is not true for many people. So just because someone might be very comfortable taking the bus into, say, Seattle, it doesn't mean that they're, you know, jumping into an Uber or Lyft to, to get to the transit station. Looking at reliability, we put, this is low. TAB expressed great concern over having enough drivers in the area. And, and due to that 10-to-20 minute pickup average, it really kind of stressed that, that the reliability could, could be low. Now, the market could shift and drivers knowing that there's a subsidized service and if it's used a lot and, you know, the, the algorithm really pushes drivers that way, that might change. But to start off, there's no guarantee that Uber and Lyft can't shift their drivers, you know, physically over to a different area. It's really driven by what's available.
Go ahead, Councilmember DeMichele.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a lot of questions about the Uber and Lyft drivers. You know, they're trying to unionize, for one thing, and then there's been a lot of criticism of both of Uber and Lyft on working conditions and, you know, if they do unionize, that might drive up the cost of the drivers, but it also might make it more attractive to local folks who, then they would be able to actually make a living wage doing that. So, you know, I know that it's a volatile situation, but do you have any idea about how any of that might affect the overall cost if the, for example, let's just say the, the drivers did get a union and were able to start getting $25 an hour, would that be a huge increase in, in what they're doing right now?
I believe we asked a version of that question in one or both of the meetings and they didn't immediately offer, you know, because, you know, the, their salespeople as well, that they're running a business, which is, is great.
Right.
But theoretically, yeah, it could drive the cost up and then, and then the cost of the city would go up as well.
And have they had situations where they weren't able to get enough drivers and had to cut back on services? Or, I haven't read about anything. On the national level, you're hearing a lot about they're getting higher wages and things like that, but I haven't heard that, that they're having to cut back service. I noticed that Metro is cutting back some service right now because they can't get enough drivers, so. And, and those are good wages too, so.
Yeah. Two things I guess I'll say is, first, there has been an increase in Uber and Lyft drivers as of late because of inflation. People are going out in a, at a higher rate than they used to in driving, so that is a little bit there. And then the second thing, which I'm forgetting. Well, we'll just move on from that, I guess.
Deputy Administrator.
Thank you. It's a great question, Councilmember DeMichele, and the reality is that there are many factors that drive Uber, Uber and Lyft pricing. So one is availability of rides. As you know, they also do peak pricing, depending on demand and the availability of drivers nearby. So there would be a lot of factors, that would be something that should council direct the administration to pursue this option, we would need to understand the answers to these questions.
Yeah, and that, that really comes back to that high, high-cost rating is, you know, it's, we're just, it's, it's the least reliable option that we, we have at the moment. Thank you, I appreciate the questions. The good news is, looking at scalability now, scalability would be high, we'd be able to shift the, the boundaries around, much like, much like the shuttles, or the scooters, my, my bad. So the, the scooters, that has a very similar scalability in, in figuring out where those subsidies would be able to, to be. And then looking at equity concerns, again, much like the, the city-run shuttle, we find it to, the, the equity concerns over this are very high, especially with, you know, the, the unreliability of drivers, the possible unreliability of drivers, the additional costs to, to riders on top of everything, the convenience, reliability, all of those kind of contribute to, to big equity concerns.
Okay, we have a question for Councilmember DeMichele.
Sorry, you know, this is one of my areas where I really like to get into it. On equity concerns, especially with the kind of cars that, that they use, I, I think the highest equity concern for me would be with people with disabilities. And so did they talk at all about having some cars set aside for people with disabilities or no?
Generally, no. Yeah, yeah, that is a huge barrier, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also on the subject of equity, under some of the options, was there any discussion at TAB in terms of, we're, we're thinking about putting these in two of our more affluent neighborhoods, let's call it. Was there some concern that we are servicing these areas and leaving out perhaps areas that might be more income-challenged or have other challenges that, so that equity is kind of playing against it? If you could comment on it or if the chair could comment on any discussion there, I'd appreciate that.
No? Yes? I, I'm, I can yield to you for sure, yeah.
Again, this is Cynthia Crass, and I would just say generally, that was a huge concern, I would say, with the program overall. And.
I would say, with the program overall. And specifically, this option. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that definitely played into the discussions at TAB, as Chair Crass mentioned. And certainly, we, there is a fear that other neighborhoods might come, that, that contributes to the, the potential ballooning cost of this, too, is why are these neighborhoods getting it and these other neighborhoods are not? And there's a higher risk of that becoming an issue than the other two options. So I'll, I'll leave it there at this point. Yeah.
Okay. Depending on which option we choose, it may be wise, you know, if it, if it's just going to be a pilot initially for Squawk and for Talis, that perhaps we have some price estimates for, let's say, the, you know, the Sycamore neighborhood, for instance, just so we show that we're thinking about it for areas where the population is, is condensed enough to make it actually work. And that's just a suggestion as, as we move forward, perhaps.
I, I do really appreciate that. That was a question that arose during the TAB as well. They asked several times, why aren't we, like, why are these the neighborhoods that we're looking at tonight, or whatever night we are talking? And our response at the time was, well, this is what council directed us to do. So if there came a time that council would want to expand the scope of this, we definitely could. But up until this point, we've kept it just to, to Squawk and Talis, just because of that. Yeah. Getting close to the end of my presentation. So, in, so we, we believe the timeline would be twenty-twenty-three. This type of relationship and partnership would take months, weeks even, in some cases, depending on how expedited the process was to become. So we think that twenty-twenty-three start wouldn't be with, outside the realm of possibility. We also decided that the risk is also moderate. There are no easy, there are no low-risk options in this particular project. We would like to note that, that these systems, well, again, we would like to, okay, in my notes, that these, these systems might prompt other neighborhoods to ask for their own version of the subsidized service, could balloon the cost. And the, the TAB was so unsure of the risk of this one, that they chose not to recommend the program either way. They didn't say absolutely not, but they also didn't say, yeah, let's, let's go for it. It was kind of a, eh, we're unsure, we don't really know which direction to go. So that concludes the specific, the specific options. I will go over to here. So our administrative recommendation this evening is, we recommend that the city pursue Option One, the on-demand pilot, that partnership with Metro option. We believe that this is the best option if we can get Metro onboard. And that's, that's such a huge if. But of course, I'm, I'm excited to have, to hear the discussion tonight about how those other options kind of play into the, to the narrative as well. So at this point, I will return it to the direction-needed slide and say thank you, and we can, I'll take any additional questions.
Great. Thank you very much for that presentation. Appreciate that. We'll open it up for questions from the committee first, and then we'll go to see if there are any people in the public that would like to comment as well. So Barb DeMichele, you had your finger up, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm just going to jump right in here. So it sounds like if we, yes, I'm treading lightly here, but it sounds to me like what the message that Metro is sending us is, you come to us with a proposal, four hundred thousand, let's say, six, whatever we're willing to lay on the table. And if that meets their needs, then they might be willing to talk to us. Is that, am I making it too blunt? But it sounds to me like that's the situation. Come up with a dollar amount that we could also work into our budget and be able to guarantee that that's what the city is willing to provide if they're willing to work with us.
This is Andrea. Again, I, I think they have made plain that they would not consider providing these services without a significant city contribution. Now, exactly what that contribution needs to be in order for them to provide some service, we have not talked to them anything specific, or what that service would, you know, then look like, depending on the level of support from the city. So it's, it's pretty clear that they would not provide it without a city subsidy, but we have not been able to discuss with them how much would be required. And even then, I think from our conversations with them, it sounds like they still are not able to guarantee that they would provide the services, just, okay, maybe we can consider it and really talk about what this could look like, how much it might cost, et cetera. So that's, that's really where we are right now. As you may have seen in the next steps portion of the memo and the materials offered tonight, we do have a meeting set up with Metro in about a month to see if any more developments have happened through the chain of command in Metro with those who can make these decisions and provide us more information.
So just a follow-up thought on, on putting money on the table, so to speak, as, as we are going to, by annual budget, we would have the ability to say that we're putting money on the table for two successive years, and perhaps that might draw them more into the conversation along the way. And I'm sure we'll have that discussion within the council as we look at budget for, for next year and the next year after that.
Yes, I believe that's a, that's a good point. Typically, in services like these, and this is also somewhat similar to the Route 200 partnership, you know, we start with services at a certain level, and then we use some time to evaluate what's working, what's not working, and provide some tweaks. And so having a multi-year pilot would allow us time to really understand what's working, what's not working, make tweaks, measure, et cetera.
Deputy Counsel President Hall?
Oh.
Okay.
Real quick on Option One, would Metro be able to support any community outreach or education initiatives, or would that be entirely on the city?
Generally, Metro supports their own outreach, and I believe that's the case with these specific programs. Yeah.
We wouldn't really have any major role to play in that work, other than maybe putting it, sharing it in social media, newsletters, whatever their current communications network is, right?
Yeah, probably a little bit more than, say, what we do for, what we, what the bus service that we have currently. Yeah.
Okay. And then I would love to hear, so in the memo and what we heard tonight, TAB did express some concern with only providing this pilot service for the Talis and Squawk neighborhoods. So if there was any more context around that discussion that the Chair or John yourself would like to share with the committee, I would personally appreciate that.
I'll, I'll invite, I'll invite Chair Crass to come and share any thoughts she might have.
Thank you. And it's a great discussion. Thanks. Yeah, we, we ended up spending quite a bit of time talking about all of this. I think we did ask ourselves the question, why these neighborhoods? And I think that, you know, a lot of the people that serve on the TAB are systems thinkers, there's some engineers on there. We, we, we weren't really clear about the analysis that led to these neighborhoods being the ones that were right for this program, like what the objectives were, what the analysis was that led us to those neighborhoods, and in, if there was one. And so I think that question came up a lot. So there was a little bit of lack of, like, the history, and I don't think anybody on the TAB really understood the history from the very beginning, and I'm not sure, and that wasn't really made super clear to us. So we were really, we felt a little bit flying blind of, like, why these neighborhoods, and what were the characteristics of these neighborhoods that was driving this? And has that analysis been done across all neighborhoods that don't have the same kind of service? And, and so that coupled with just this idea of wanting a needs analysis, like, are they, are they asking for this as a community? Is it, you know, like, what, what's the likelihood of the uptake? Like, they're just, it felt like a little bit of a lack of analysis. And I think that was making us, that was causing a lot of anxiety for us. And so we, we all decided it was above our pay grade, and then we would give the, follow the assignment as best we could, but that was, that was in the background for us a lot. And I want to make one more comment about the dollar figure. I mean, high, low, medium compared to one another certainly can be compared, but we just felt without having a really good needs analysis, and, and some of the analysis, like, it was hard to know if that was a high number or a low number. And without having a clear sense of the goal, like, is the equity concerns about who would participate maybe could have been offset if the direction was clear. It doesn't matter who is going to get off the road, we just want people off the, we want to diminish, you know, single occupancy use, because it was pointed out, if there's fewer vehicles on the road, that benefits everybody. So those kinds of questions, we felt like, you know, there was a, like, a lack of analysis. And so that made us a little bit uncomfortable. And that's, hopefully captures, does that kind of your recollection of, yeah. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Do you have another question?
Yeah, based on that context, is some of this kind of needs analysis around transit going to be, I'm assuming going to be captured in our transit master plan in those efforts? Is that correct?
Yes. I, I have spoken to Stephen Padua about the specific, that specific question, and his hope is to include those sort of other neighborhood questions within the transit study. It's not specifically built in at the moment, but it is on their minds at the moment.
Okay.
Councilmember DeMichele, go ahead.
So this is me getting into the weeds too much, but I think it's related to the, the needs analysis. And you mentioned, too, we have this topography that we've got to deal with in all these hills. But the Highlands have exactly the same situation. Sycamore, I don't actually know how you could get a bus up, up there because of those narrow-winding roads. So I have exactly, had exactly the same question, you know, why Talis, why Squawk? When the Highlands has that high hill, and when I was out campaigning to, to be on the council, talked to a lot of people in the Highlands who said, I would love to take a bus, but I don't want to have to ever walk up that hill, you know? And I think we have the same situation in Talis and Squawk. So I guess the question would be, if we're going to do a look at the needs analysis and look at the whole city, how adaptable, I guess, would be, would buses be in some of these, some of the roads and the, and the hills that we have? How successful will transit service be in terms of delivery in, in some of the, of the topography that we've got? So I just wanted to make sure that we've got that on our radar. The Highlands also has a high level of immigrants and elderly people. So again, I don't know why they got left out of, of the analysis. So I think we need to kind of go back and rethink that, too. Thanks.
And I, and I can make a short comment on that, too. I remember going back and watching Stephen Padua's presentation last, I think, June twenty-twenty-one. And Highlands was sort of floating in the background of the situ, of the presentation. It was mentioned, it was, but the, the focus was more on Squawk and Talis. So during the course of my learning about the project and starting to dive into it, I kind of asked the question, like, should we include Highlands in this? And the, the answer at that point from, I guess, my supervisors was, well, focus on Squawk and Talis for now, but, you know, keep Highlands in the background. So that's kind of the, the reason why it, it, why I've specifically been discussing Squawk and Talis specifically this evening. Yeah.
Deputy Administrator Snyder.
Thank you. Well, as, as you know, and as Councilmember Joe knows very well, we have had this idea of a Squawk and Talis shuttle for a very long time, many years. And I know that in my previous service with the city, I was helping work on this for a time period. And so what I recall from those early days of discussions is the feeling that Squawk and Talis in particular had fewer transit options than neighborhoods like the Highlands, where they do have that challenging topography. The Highlands, at the time, and I have to admit, I am a little out of date with all the pandemic changes in transit service, but at the time, they did have a dial-a-ride service, so that, which is somewhat similar to the on-demand service we're talking about today, except required a little bit more forethought and planning to be able to book that ride service. And so they had, they had that, they had, and I, I think the desire was to provide something that could work for Squawk and Talis, because the Isquail, Highlands already had some type of option. So I, I think that's one of the reasonings. Should council wish for us to explore how to expand this pilot project to other neighborhoods in Issaquah, we'd have to look again at, you know, what are those criteria for service and have that discussion?
Other questions from the committee? Go ahead.
Back to the transit master plan. Do you happen to know off the top of your head, Andrea, what the next steps are on that and what the timeline for that plan is?
I, I know some of the immediate next steps. So we've just secured a consultant to do that. So I think, I think we're finalizing that contract. And then as we are looking at kicking off that work before the end of the year, we're trying to find a time to, to go to the Transportation Advisory Board to talk about public engagement and steps in public engagement for that transit plan, and then really kick off those efforts at the beginning of next year. So it's a, we also hope to get some information from the transit, the transit plan to help inform the CIP and TIP update next year. We're probably not going to have it all, but we're going to try to, try to have some of that information to help inform us, looking at projects and what types of projects we could prioritize for that process. So that's, those are some of the, the next steps within the next four months to six months that I understand.
Are we expecting the work to be complete end of calendar year twenty-twenty-three, or will it spill over into twenty-four?
I think it will spill over a little into twenty-twenty-four.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? So I guess my question relates to the experiences that we've seen in Summa, which I think you mentioned, you know, they, they've tried a, a system similar to ours. Do we have any information or data on how many people are riding, how many people took advantage of it? Was it successful because of X? Was it unsuccessful because of Y reason along the way? If you could kind of expound on that?
Yeah, definitely. I have that data. It's not coming to me immediately. It's in my notes somewhere. I did have a chance to talk to them specifically about the ridership and, you know, their successes and, and all of that. So that is something that I can go back and find and pass along. I also, I remembered the second part of the thing that I forgot earlier for Councilmember DeMichele's question earlier, and that was about access and equity. So one of the towns that I talked to, and I don't remember what the name of it was right off, but I believe it was down in Arizona. So they, this was separate from the example that they gave me. This is one that I stumbled upon and contacted, and I got, actually got to talk to them. And so they, through, with Lyft, do have a kind of a surf, service area subsidized program, but they have an additional, additional paratransit service that is kind of on top of it, actually more of a Venn diagram. It's not quite over the top of it, but it, it meets. And on that note, I do want to mention that my recent research has uncovered that the Metro DART access no longer operates south of I-90 in Issaquah. So that's also some specific context that is probably important to this conversation.
Okay. So if we did pursue, number one, for additional conversation, based on what you're saying, am I hearing you correctly, that there wouldn't be the ability for people with disabilities to ride on this Metro bus, or would they still have that opportunity? I guess that's a concern that I think I've, I've heard this evening. And, and does I, I guess that's a concern that I think I've, I've heard this evening and, and does kind of influence any decisions we might be making?
Yes, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, looking at the, the, the design of the Samamish shuttle specifically, I believe it has a spot for wheelchairs. I could be wrong about that. Okay.
Metro prides itself on having its fleet be 100% accessible to those who use mobility devices such as wheelchairs.
Great, thank you. And I guess my, my other question that's kind of been pressing for me is, is if a person does not have a smartphone, how are they accessing the system? Or is it something that's a limitation?
Yes, I believe the, the statistics, at least nationally, I think it's low 80% of people have smartphones. I believe it's high 90s of people who have cellphones at least, so that's a good thing. And the, these, all, all three of these systems have hotlines that basically people can call specifically the hotline, say, hey, I'm at this address, I need a pickup. Because that was a concern of ours, too. What if someone doesn't have a cellphone even? They might leave their house and have a landline, but what happens when they need to leave Safeway? Do they go up to the front desk and ask to use their phone, which is a possibility, but that is, that is a barrier and something that we would certainly need to consider.
Yeah, and I think the question has some urgency for me in the sense that, not to put people into certain categories, but people that don't have smartphones in general are those that we're trying to reach and give that opportunity to, to go other places and, and hook up with the, the larger transit system and go all the way into Seattle or to Bellevue. And we may be unknowingly or unintentionally excluding a population that this program is specifically designed to try to, to try to reach. Okay, if there are no other questions from the committee, we'll go ahead and open it up for any public comment that might be out there from either people in the chamber tonight or online. Okay, I don't see anyone in the City Council Chamber with a desire to speak. Deputy Clerk, are there any individuals online that wish to speak?
Chair Joe, there are nobody, no attendees online that have indicated a desire to speak.
We're a very popular TV draw. I, I understand that. Okay, we will open this up for discussion amongst the committee, and we'll see where we want to go with, with this particular item. And I, I guess the, the administration recommendation is to go with, number one, pursue a partnership with Metro, run on-demand pilot program. It would require us to put a significant amount of money on the table, so to speak, to get them to come and talk to us about our potential options. There's no guarantee that they would even offer a program in the future, but the, the conversation is probably the most important first step as, as been outlined tonight. So a discussion from the committee. Councilmember De Michele is recognized.
Thanks. So first of all, thanks to the Transit Advisory Board for their extensive discussion and clear direction. And I greatly benefited from sitting in on your initial discussion. There is a lot of nuance to this and a lot of things that need to be hashed out. And I just admired the discussion that was held the first evening, so, and thank you for, for the really excellent recommendation that came through, and thank you for being here so that we could talk to you directly. So I think we should go ahead. I mean, obviously Metro would be by far the best solution if we can get them to cooperate with us. So, but I think that we need to be really clear that we need to come up with a, a level of financial support that we're willing to put on the table. I think we have to figure out how we're going to structure that with a biennial budget. I, I think that we're pretty clear that nothing would be getting going next year. So do we want to put in a modest amount of money for 2023 that would help us with the negotiations and perhaps more of an in-depth need study? And then a larger amount of money in 2024? That would be, I think, something administration might want to come back to us with the recommendation. And then I also think that we, we have to acknowledge that Metro is not a enthusiastic participant in this discussion, and that maybe we are going to have to look at a Plan B. And I, Uber and Lyft have many drawbacks, and I think that we need to really explore it, but I think it would be well worth our while to continue to vet that option as a possible Plan B if Metro just simply says, no amount of money on the table is going to convince us to come out here and work on this. So let's see. I think, yeah, I mean, there are concerns about, obvious concerns about our running or contracting with a company to run our own service. And my, and my concern there again would be the equity issue for disabled people with, if we can't drop them off at the transit center, that's a huge barrier for how do they get from their drop-off point to the transit center and so forth? So, and state law is kind of a, a barrier there. So I would support going forward with conversations with Metro. That would be our best outcome. And then I think we also need to still keep Plan B on the table and see if we can work through the problems that we have with Lyft and Uber to get to a good solution if that's the only alternative that we have.
Deputy President?
Thank you.
Yes?
Councilmember De Michele said it basically perfectly. I feel pretty similar, pretty similarly, although I'm kind of of two minds here because, you know, a really interesting point has been brought up in that we don't really have a clear needs analysis, understanding of the data and how data is pointing us toward a problem statement that's clear that then points us toward potential solutions. I think we all know what the problem is, but being able to quantify that to help us when we go to Metro or when we go to a partner is helpful, too. So sharing once again my support for the master transit plan and all that important work that will feed into this. That said, I do think there are reasons to move forward now without that system of data and storytelling in place right away for a couple of reasons. One, as was said, it has been a community priority in these neighborhoods to have a shuttle for some time now. It's been a priority stated on council for some time now. And our priority to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips and also to just expand forms of transportation that don't include getting in your car has been stated multiple times as a priority for this council. So there are benefits to doing that. Another one is that I think of right off the top of my head is Metro is currently in the process of eliminating consolidating routes in cities that don't have a lot of usage. Issaquah is a good example of that upcoming. But if, if, this is a big if, we were to move forward, let's say Metro says, yes, Issaquah, we would love to pursue option one with you, and we have great touchpoints with the community, community starts to love it and really use the system, Metro and other transit agencies might look at Issaquah then and say, okay, there is actually a foundation of people that are very interested in not using their car, are very interested in routes, transit routes. And so I see that as a net benefit as a potential, but that's also going to take a lot of work on, on the city's part. So there's that. I sympathize with the concern that TAB has expressed about serving two communities out of a very large network of communities here in Issaquah and why not others. I think that this is a good place to start, though, if we really are framing it as a pilot program and then knowing that all of that conversation needs to be folded into the transit master plan. So perhaps we could communicate back to the mobility or the Transportation Advisory Board that those comments were very well received and because of that feedback, we want to really make sure that that's tied into the transit master plan. Some other considerations, resources, direct costs and staff is a big one that we have to be mindful of. I appreciate you bringing that up. Our ability to collect and receive useful data, I think, is going to be helpful, too. If we were to pursue option one, we would have a partner who's collecting that data. So we wouldn't necessarily have to then also have resources to collect our own data, like option two, or to work with Uber or Lyft in option three to collect their data, which I imagine some of that might be owned by the company or proprietary, although we would have had a, you bring up, you brought up scooters a couple of times, which is a sore subject, by the way. So, but, you know, we had an agreement with them that they would share data. So if we were to ever explore option three, that would definitely be something we would want to explore with them is sharing data. Option one is also really compelling because of system consistency with the network of Metro already and also familiarity was one thing that Highlands had thought about a lot. Well, how are we going to brand the trucks? How are people going to know that this is a resource for them if the Isqal Highlands logo isn't on the side of the vehicle? So being able to see a Metro vehicle, you'll instantly know that this is an Issaquah service. Opportunity for bus route expansion, I already said that. I think, I echo Councilmember De Michele that, Council, we need to be clear that we're committed to pursuing this pilot, pilot program, option one with Metro. And if they're starting to feel timid, I feel, I think we should feel comfortable to say, why are you feeling timid and what would get you to the point where you would feel comfortable? And then we can have a conversation of, is this threshold too high? Or is this too high a price? Because if it is, it might just be worth saying, we need to delay this work and fold it in with the, the master transit plan. I'm feeling very uninterested in the Uber-Lift program at the moment for all of the equity and risk reasons that were brought up earlier, but we might have to pursue that option if Metro truly is not able to come to the table for option one or for whatever reasons they're not able to. I don't want to necessarily, it's not out of spite or anything like that. They, they have budgets just like we do, so I completely understand. But we might need to pursue option three if option one doesn't work out. I don't think we necessarily need to commit a lot of staff resources to that now, but because if we pursue option one, it doesn't go our way, I would think it would be good to have another touch either at this committee or a council meeting of the whole to then say, okay, we've struck out a couple of times. We have this Uber-Lift option, or the other option is to wait and do it with data and storytelling of all, with the master transit plan. So I think that there are kind of two paths there, assuming option one doesn't work out. So those are my comments and eager to hear what Councilmember Joe has to say now.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the conversation this evening. I also appreciate that our TAB chair is here, giving us the perspective that we're having, that we had from, from our citizens. They are volunteers and yet they give so much of their time and expertise to the city, and it's not something that I think we appreciate enough and acknowledge enough. So thank you for all that hard work. Appreciate the staff presentation this evening, very thorough to, to give us the options and outlining some of the concerns and give us the color behind some of the reasons why there might be a red box there, there might be a, a green box indicating that it, it might be okay to go forward. In general, I would support moving forward with option number one, taking it to a budget conversation to figure out if the amount that we have talked about tonight is appropriate or if we need to up the ante a little bit, just to make sure that staff has that authority and that leeway to go to the table and see if they can get a partner that is willing to have that conversation with us through Metro. It's difficult because you're pushing on a string in a lot of ways, just to use an analogy. You're trying to get someone else to come to the table that's not interested in really extending the service out to us. We need to be a willing partner that, that has the backing of, of the council and is very clear in terms of what, you know, kind of leeway they have coming to the table. So I look forward to that conversation in the budget discussions. I think that the equity issues do concern me in the sense that I live on Squawk. I know that there are a couple of other members on council that live either in Squawk or on, in Talis. And so it, we need to make sure that we're looking out for everyone in the city and trying to have policies that generally provide for the, the welfare of, of everybody. With that in mind, I think that stressing that this is a pilot to see if it works, it's the chicken and egg paradox in the sense that they're not going to provide the service unless they have the number of people that give a, a ridership that's equivalent to, to make it profitable for them or at least pencil out. And then we don't have the ridership until the line's there, right? And so at least going to the table with the, the authority and the money that we're going to talk about through the budget will show that we're coming with good faith to, to have that conversation and try to extend it out. And if we're not able to get a willing partner on the other side, I think Deputy President Hall brings up a good point that we should perhaps reevaluate it at mid-year, whatever it might be, or at the end of year one, and look at the options again. But I'm, I'm willing to give option number one a, a, a good try and, and give the administration and the staff the, the resources they need to go to the table to try to have that conversation as we go forward. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you. You just reminded me of one other point I wanted to make was that I'd like to really hammer home with council and the community that this is a pilot program. It's a pilot program that will then influence potential future programs or change in priorities in the future. So I wonder if as this morphs into an agenda bill, we could change the title to include pilot in it so that also the community knows we're not just starting a shuttle in these communities willy-nilly and haven't done the due diligence in other neighborhoods. It is a pilot program to influence then, should we look elsewhere, too.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And, and I guess just one last concern that I remembered was certainly one of the goals is to reduce the trips in town. And having a shuttle service that's on-call or any of the other options doesn't really accomplish that goal, as Deputy Administrator Snyder pointed out. If I'm taking my kid to school, I'm taking them to school and then I'm coming back. If there's an Uber driver coming or an on-call person, they're coming to my house and then taking my passenger to the school, we haven't eliminated any trips at all. And so a fixed route, you know, is, is certainly a pipe dream for us at this point, but that at least consolidates the trips and reduces the trips in town if we, if we do it right. So, you know, it's ultimately the, the goal that I see is, as being pertinent and one that we want to try, try to strive for. And none of these options, as was pointed out, really accomplish that, but we have to take small steps as we go and, and it's at least a start. So I'm willing to give it a go and we'll see what our competent and talented staff can come back with. And I know that they've done great in other negotiations for us, so I have all the confidence that they're going to give the best product back to us that they possibly can. Yeah. Okay, announcements? Anything that people would like to talk about? Go ahead.
Just Deputy Administrator Snyder and I are aware that the Regional Transit Committee is going to take up this, this same topic a week from now at their monthly meeting, and we will both be in attendance. And I haven't seen the packet yet, but we will be very, very interested in what they're going to discuss at that meeting.
Any other announcements?
I guess just to say behalf of the administration that next Monday, for any interested community members listening in, next Monday, I believe the mayor will be presenting her proposed biennial budget for the next two years. So that's very exciting for us on council, also for the community. So if you're interested in engaging in that process, please do connect in with us and we'll make sure you're in the loop.
Okay, and my announcement concerns Salmon on Sunset, which is being held at the Fish Hatchery, September 17th, noon to 6:00 p.m. there'll be live music, a fly fishing exhibition, art inaction activities, tours and more. And the reason I mention it, there is a tie to the city, of course. Our LTAC daughters- tie to the city, of course. Our LTAC daughters, dollars are lodging tax advisory council dollars were given to the hatchery, along with some other community groups, to try to encourage tourism and encourage people more than 10 miles outside of town to come into town and enjoy what Isqua has to offer. It's a ramp up to, of course, our Salmon Days Festival. So that's September 17th on Sunday from noon to 6:00. And it should be a, a great activity for the day. And it gives us an opportunity to actually look at the hatchery and see the salmon without all the crowds, right? You really can't get there on Salmon Days. You really kind of have to plan an opportunity and a visit there before it happens. And this festival will give us a chance to do that. So just thought I'd share that with everybody. All right. If there's no other business or issues that this committee needs to address this evening, we are adjourned at 8:01 p.m.